If you all rise. Good evening, welcome to the July 18th, 2023 Village of Sag Harbor zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Could I have a motion to open the public meeting?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So first, I wanted to thank our new members, Tim McGuire, who's been on the board before as both a member and a chair, also Val Florio, who's been our chairman in the past, and our new member down at the end, Damon Brown. So could I have, I made some corrections to the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 meeting. Does anyone else have any corrections to make to the minutes?
No.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 20, 2023 meeting?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, now we will move to old business. First on the agenda is 55 Howard Street, and I believe that that is going to be adjourned. So could I have a motion to adjourn 55 Howard Street to the August 15th meeting?
So move.
All in favor?
Hi.
Next up on the agenda is 132 Main Street, and I believe that's also going to be adjourned. So could I have a motion to adjourn 132 Main Street to the August 15th meeting?
So move.
I will second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. And then we have 62 Franklin Avenue, which also is going to be adjourned. Correct? Yep. Oh, they have to re-notice, okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn 62 Franklin Avenue to the August 15th meeting?
So move.
I will second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Thank you, now we are at 45 Hillside Holdings, 45 Hillside Drive West.
Hi, good afternoon, how are you?
Great, thank you. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, William Hoffer from the firm Bronster LLP, 156 West 56th Street, Suite 703, New York, New York, 10019.
Right, and you're an attorney, correct?
That's me. I am, yes.
Okay, great, so I believe the last time you were here, we had talked about a condition to the, accepting these variances would be to screen the rear property line.
Right. Yesterday afternoon, at approximately a quarter to 4:00 PM, I had emailed Ms. Carrie Garapai several pictures of recent trees that had been planted there to, in fact, seal off that specific area, so there would be very limited or no visibility in between. Did she forward that to you for review or anything like that?
We did get, did everyone, the photos in their email?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Confirmed.
Okay.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was sufficient proof that, you know, what was, that the original request that was made at the June hearing to, in fact, cover that area. But the work has been taken to, in fact, plant those trees there, so that area will be covered and visibility should be limited. So I guess upon your review, that's sufficient, that's great, if not, then we'll be happy to supply whatever else is needed.
Um, so I, I did see the photos, I also did look at the site, there, they are spread a little bit, but there's a fence behind them, so I don't know what people feel, how you feel about the, well, Alex is, is Alex coming, okay. Um. Ham, I don't know if you had a chance to visit the site, or did you just see?
No, I haven't seen it for this time.
Did you see the photos?
I saw the photos, I think he could put more.
The photos didn't seem as though it screened it.
Right.
Meaning that you can't see it.
Right.
They really need to be closely spaced if you're not going to be able to see it.
Would agree with, we have two vacant lots, this is an aerial photograph taken from 20, one on the side in the back.
Correct.
And the eventuality that there'd be neighbor on either property, I would think that substantial screening would be a requirement of the approval.
So would be sufficient to plant another evergreen between the ones that are there? I would think that would do it.
I would think that a planting plan would be used as a document for the approval instrument of the.
I personally would like to see a plan.
Right, we had requested a plan at the last meeting. So would your client be willing to give us a plan of locating additional evergreens? They could be the same ones that are there now, just between the spaces. Yeah, one between each, each, and they don't, they could be separate of them, they don't have to be in line with them.
Okay, so is it, what are there, there's two additional that have to be planted, is that, is that correct, or?
No, no, it's just, there's a row, there's a fence, and then there's
Right.
based evergreens along the rear property line, and all requesting is that there'd be an additional evergreen placed between each of the ones that are there. So I don't know how many that amounts to, it's something like eight.
Okay.
And what you could do is submit a planting plan to us showing that.
Okay. Is that specifically, is that specifically what, what a planting plan, is that the terminology, I just want to make sure I get that correct, the planting plan?
Yeah. Landscape plan, a planting.
Okay, right.
It would show the pool and the fence and the trees that are there and the proposed additional trees.
Okay. Okay.
And I think that would be sufficient if everybody agrees that that sounds like.
Okay. Okay.
And I think that was it, unless anybody else has any questions? And I don't know if there's anybody from the public that wants to comment? No, okay, anyone else have any further thoughts? So could I have a motion to adjourn 45 Hillside Drive West to the August 15th meeting?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
That'll be, that'll be the same time, right, 5:30 PM, virtual?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. And I'm sorry, one last question, does Ms. Garapai, is she the one who's to receive the plan, is that correct, or?
Do you want a certain height for the trees?
Well, we originally said four to six feet.
Okay.
And, and if, if you match the trees that are there, it would be sufficient, because they will grow.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank, thank you very much, we'll try to get that done in a timely fashion for you, we appreciate your time, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, be well, thanks.
Okay, now we're going to move on to new business. And first up is 5 Washington Avenue, could I have a motion to open 5 Washington Avenue?
I'll make a motion to open 5 Washington Avenue.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Could you state your name and address?
Yes.
Yes, could you state your name and address for the record?
Jeff Sharon, 19 Robson.
Great, and are you an attorney?
No.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you, you can proceed.
I'm just having a little hard time hearing the speaker, can he just speak up a little bit, please?
Okay, says better?
Yes, thank you.
I present the application for variance at 5 Washington Ave. Now there's a one-story, pre-existing, non-formal structure that has been pre-dilapidated, my understanding sort of a nuisance in the neighborhood. I'm here to request getting to that structure with a two-story structure. I was in front of the ARB three months ago. Especially I occupied the front house. Generally talking feedback. I'm here trying to get some predictions to make.
Okay, so we did discover one problem with the plans, and then bring your little sketch, the, the pyramid drawing isn't really done correctly. So generally, what we'd like to have are spot elevations on the property lines showing maybe five or 10 feet apart, just to show how the grade is traveling along with the property so that you can project the pyramid from there, but then on the elevation drawings, we like to have noted, you know, the floor elevations and the elevation points where the pyramid is taken from. But the problem we discovered on the, maybe you could hold that up so he could see, on the drawings is that the distance from the property line to the house on the survey doesn't match the distance from the property line to the house in the drawings. So here, this is shown as 15 feet, but in reality, it's only 11 foot nine, and if it's 11 foot nine, at that point, you're going to have all of this pyramid violation. You may, which may send you back to the drawing board, or you may want to request severance for that?
I think, I understand now, I was aware that part of it does impede into the pyramid, so.
Yeah, because the drawings aren't correct.
Right. Part of, I think part of the application was also to.
Right, but the way that the law works is you have, you're, you're requesting only 25 cubic feet, but this is going to be, I don't know, 1,000 or something. So you, if you were requesting 1,000 and you went to 25, we would be fine, but it's going the other way, it has to be re-noticed. We really need to re- we really need to have your drawings redone, because you may want to adjust the location of the house slightly, or you might want to make the house narrower, I don't, you have lots of choices, depending on what the volume of violation is to the pyramid. So that's something you'd really need to talk to your architect about. So we need the spot elevations on the survey. Property lines parallel to the house, and then you need to show those elevations on the, the actual elevation drawing showing the pyramid, so we know where the first floor line is and the elevations that you're taking your pyramid from. And then that will give you the basis for calculating the pyramid violation.
Is there any feedback I can get as to if shifting it?
Sure, we can.
It being a corner property?
Right.
I realize it's a front yard setback.
Right.
If shifting it towards Washington Street side would allow me to not have to approach the pyramid, is that something, how is that something you might respond to?
Well, we certainly wouldn't want it to be closer than 20 feet, because that's what is allowed in the historic district. At the moment, you're 24 feet on that side now.
I believe it's in the historic district.
No, you're not in the historic district, but we sort of use that as a guideline, because that's what the minimum front yard is in the historic district, I don't know how other people feel about the setbacks.
I'd agree with that.
But it should be 35.
It's non-conforming, correct?
Right. Yes, but he's tearing down what's, yeah, he's tearing down what's there.
I see portions of it being turned, turned down, I mean, tearing down.
The whole thing is being.
It'll also be turned down.
Yeah. So I mean, that's something we would consider, moving it a few feet towards Washington might diminish to some extent the pyramid on the other side, the, sort of the south property line, and I don't know how people feel about that as a.
So to answer the questions, you have 15 feet as drawn as your side yard, however, the survey shows 11.9 feet, and that results in a 3100 cubic foot approximate, I, you know, did this, not as your architect, but in doing the math here, so you have a 3,000
Okay, so.
Cubic square foot infraction, and the board would have to decide which is the least impactful? Is it the setback relief, or is it the pyramid relief? And if your architect were to move this structure to a 15-foot side yard, you currently show 24.0 feet as a setback from Washington Avenue. If that reduces to 20 foot, you have minimal setback issue, however, you have a second skyplane infraction from Lighthouse Lane. Your drawing shows 35 feet to the facade of the house, which results in pyramid infraction on the gable, if it goes to the 28.3 feet as drawn, either move that house back, if you can push it away.
So what Val is saying, the pyramid is from all property lines?
Sure.
So you could move it this way a little bit?
Yeah.
To eliminate some of this?
Right.
But you might also move it this way, because this peak
Yeah.
is getting caught also.
That, that we were embarrassed and request and ask for pyramid relief, just to keep the gable somewhat consistent with
Right.
And one of the solutions, I guess, to get around that is using some other sort of gable.
Right. You could do a hip on it, but you could also slide the house a little bit back more.
Yeah.
Because the 3,000, if that's sort of approximately correct, is a big violation for us to approve. So you may want to try to adjust things somewhat to get that number down.
Well, that would, if the house were to shift away from Lighthouse Lane, and then you meet the conforming setback, you reduce the infraction of the pyramid on the front of the house without having to change the roof, and it complies with zoning towards the rear yard opposite Lighthouse. So now you'd be looking at one setback relief and a small section of pyramid if the house were to move four feet to Washington. Right, and the next question would be, are there any neighbors who have commented on the application? Yes.
I guess. But yeah, I mean.
Yeah. That's.
So, does anybody else on the board have any questions?
No.
No, I agree with what, I agree with what the chairman said. Okay, try to move the house back from Lighthouse Lane, double hop with everything, and then move it over towards Washington Avenue.
Because effectively, you have to compromise in some degree, and we're giving you some direction as to how to do it.
Okay. So is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? You can come to the podium. Great, thank you, so if you could state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Matthew Powers, and I live at 30 Lighthouse Lane.
And if you could raise your right hand, just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
May proceed.
Great, thanks for having me. First, to want to thank Mr. Sharon for being consultative during the process. He came over to the house, we talked about the plans, you know, the app for, you know, if we had any feedback or things to improve his plans, we very much appreciate, it's a small neighborhood, Mr. Sharon lives in the neighborhood as well, so it's something that I do commend him for, not every developer would do that. And as Mr. Sharon also mentioned, the house has had a nuisance, is quite dilapidated now, it's used as staff housing for a little restaurant. It's not kept, you know, kept out of all the grass, overgrown and so on. And so, my wife and I, as neighbors, we're about to deal with it first, but once in a while. So we're actually quite happy that the property will be torn down and a nice property will that will be built there, however, we had two concerns, which, you know, Mr. Sharon has graciously agreed to. The first of which, so we are on the south side of the property, so we share an entire north side of the property shares an entire
Right.
you know, length of the property line, and so, first of which, there's a number of diseased and dying trees that are overhanging the property, which Mr. Sharon agreed to take down, those are closer to Lighthouse Lane. The second part, it's really just about privacy, right now it is a one-story building where, you know, we, we have a stockade fence that's about six and a half feet, so there's no, there is privacy within our front backyard. With the second story being built, as well as a 250 square foot balcony in the back, that will directly overlook into our backyard, the windows will overlook into our property, into our house. We certainly have some concerns there, Mr. Sharon did agree to some privacy screening, so tall evergreens, things to prevent that, and so for our perspective, really just as far as the the other coverage of the house, so we can, can maintain that privacy, but otherwise, we welcome the plans.
Great, thank you. Would you want some sort of lattice screening on your side of the balcony to help mitigate the view in?
So minus screening on the balcony.
On the, on the balcony itself, going up, because that's sometimes, that's something we sometimes have, people do on second floor balconies.
Much less concerned about that, more so just having privacy between both of the yards.
Because I.
If those evergreens are able to provide that, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, evergreens at the property line, basically, yeah.
Want to specify a height and a spacing?
I mean, we could, I mean, I guess one thing would be, you know, to see what his proposal comes up with, for where the house is located, but we, you know, the ARB is going to want a planting plan anyway, so we could make that part of our request, just to have planting or screening along that property line. I don't know, they would have to be fairly tall to screen a second story. I don't know, did you have your scale?
Or at least in the first story. I'm sorry, I'm seeing. Good news is it moves the house away from you, the additional four feet will help. However, he's been to the ARB board, and oftentimes, the second floor balconies are taken into consideration where plantings are a must-have in many cases, so that, that board becomes your, also your checks, you know, mechanism to help you maintain a sense of privacy, if that's a concern, because you can attend that meeting as well. I have a question regarding the size of the house, and if that's something that requires a public hearing. If it's over 3,000 square feet, that will invite more potential neighbors to come look at this and have a voice concerned as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's under 3,000, yeah.
So.
That's reasonable.
Right. That's all, it, great, thank you very much, is there anyone else?
I'm also happy to show additional landscaping.
Right.
Right.
Is there anyone else from the public? We didn't, do we know if there's anyone on? Okay. So should we request something like 10 to 12 foot evergreens spaced, I don't know whether they should be spaced. So we'll have you come back with a planting plan that would show screening along that property line, at least in the area where the house is. And they would have to be fairly tall plants. They don't all have to be all the same variety. Okay, so she didn't before, she does now, so we can hear from her?
Hi there, thank you.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Eileen Rosenberg, 36, 36, 10 Carver Street. I also happen to have property on Lighthouse Lane, so that's why I said 36 Lighthouse.
Raise your right hand, just to swear you in?
Yes, it's raised.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I, I think the neighborhood is probably pleased that there's work to be done on the house, because it has been problematic, I think, in terms of upkeep and maintenance and cars and litter, et cetera, so I think people are pleased with that. I, I guess I would like to ask, are you, is the ZBA asking for revision of the plans? I missed that part of it.
Yes, well, the site plan has to be revised, because the pyramid, the pyramid drawings on the elevations are not correct, so they may adjust the location of the house slightly to diminish the pyramid violation.
Well, that's what I was wondering about, because repeatedly, a lot of variances for piercing the height, the skyplane have been problematic, so I was just wondering if that was taken into consideration. Instead, unfortunately, I missed a little bit of the conversation about that, so I just wanted to clarify that that's being reviewed.
Yes, definitely.
Right, okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to add? No, okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn 5 Washington Avenue to the August 15th meeting?
So, go ahead. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Great, thank you. Okay, next up is 80 High Street. Thank you, and I believe Carrie was going to just open and adjourn this?
I, yes.
Okay, so could I have a motion to open?
Motion to open 80 High Street.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And now could I have a motion to adjourn 80 High Street?
Motion to adjourn 80 High Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Carrie, can you let them know that their shed is going to require a pyramid variance? Eighty High Street.
That's why, that's why they're.
Adjourned. Okay, perfect. Great, thank you. Hey, now we're at one thirty-three Main Street. Could I have a motion to open one thirty-three Main Street?
Motion to open one thirty-three Main Street.
Second?
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So Dennis, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Dennis Downs, Preston Street, St. Paul's Attorney.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
Virginia Roadhouse, most of the property owned by the owners. It's a business district. Computed by a two-story frame dwelling that was originally built as a residence. About fifteen years ago, it was a two-story, uh, it was a, so it has garage in the back. Uh, it's a one-story, two-story garage, that fronts on Church Street. In the nineteen eighty-five, the building was specifically looking at properties on Church Street and on Division Street from May and June. And what they were basically, they were trying to do is encourage the property owners to develop the properties so that they had stores basically on both streets. Once it took advantage of it with Ted Conover, the people that first, he built the addition to the act of meeting. I have not, I don't know exactly how to use it, but it's a, it's a personal. The other one was most recently, this woman, she requested to do it as a garage, to commercial. On, down by, I don't know, subject premises. You had the bank building in the corner of Washington and Main, and they built another building back that was supposed to front on church, was on the front of Washington Avenue, Washington Street. So, but they followed the intention with the code that we do. This particular building has had no changes to it in the past ten, fifteen years. Current owner, Lynn Shidet, would like to convert the garage into a commercial building for the sale of retail property, no, excuse me, sale of retail goods. I have two plans. If you don't like the two-story building there, I have a one-story building. Okay, we'll leave the building exactly as it is, and we'll just be basically doing another change to the front doors. We have two garage doors that come out, and two, well, windows that we put in there, one on the other side, but we don't have the door. And I've got a set of plans to show you. That's the way you want to go. The preference would be to do a two-story building, so that they have a gallery, modest gallery, so to speak, on the second floor, and sell retail on the ground. But I don't know what the board's feeling is. This area is a little bit different than, say, Division Street. Commercial stores going back and forth. One other commercial building on Division Street's side was Paige Restaurant, where they made a second entrance basically to the business by putting an outdoor cleaning facility. Pretty much the rest of that street is the same, the same, the owners have nothing covered. So if you can come in this direction, you prefer me to go, I won't waste your time with two-story building if that's what you want.
So, um, there are a bunch of things that are considered here. The minimum square footage requirement for this building would be six hundred, and it's definitely under that. The, the square footage numbers that you presented aren't actually right, you discovered, because the building is something like four hundred thirteen or four hundred twelve square feet, not three thirty-nine, because they take it to the outside. I think you were just doing maybe the floor area of the selling space or something.
Gentlemen gave me a plan, maybe just to measure the interior.
Yeah, it was, so, um, they are closer to that number. If the second floor was considered with the first floor, then you're above the six hundred number, so that removes that variance. But that would mean we'd be approving a variance for a second floor, which is, um, so I don't know how, what, what do people feel about?
I'd prefer to grant the variance for under square footage and make it a one-story building.
I agree with Tim's comment. The part of the issue is taking a one-story garage and turning it into a two-story structure with sets of other good precedent for other garage buildings.
And there are a number of garage buildings along there now, which are all one-story, so it, it does conform more to the character of the neighborhood as a one-story building. I don't know, Ham, what do you?
I concur, and also in terms of Church Street, the building is right on Church Street.
Right.
To go up to the second floor, I prefer that they stay on the first floor.
I, I have, you know, been around a while, so I had a sense that that might be a concern. So I had the off that grabbed the set of plans, showing what is that today, that's your first case?
So this in effect doesn't change the profile of the building at all, it just?
The building remains.
Same, it just gets renovated and the windows and doors.
You can see on the second page, windows will be on either side of the door.
Right.
And the work of the garage on the top, that's a bit involved.
Right.
The side that faces south, or the end of existing door. The tackle faces towards Main Street, that's two. But this particular design would require at least an amount of change to the structure. But deciding.
That would be a nice addition to Church Street.
So this wouldn't require any setback variances at all, correct? It's just a, it's pre-existing, correct?
That's right.
Just the parking, small parking, and?
Right now it's a warehouse, it's in that way.
Oh, it, yeah, and also the parking is probably, that parking variance that the building inspector called out is probably based on it being a two-story building. Yeah, so, and it was, they're providing nine spaces where twelve are required. I'm sure the twelve will go down to below nine, probably, right? It's that many fewer square feet, so that, so that need probably goes away completely.
The only thing I really have to do is I got the permission from the building trustees to connect that building to the sewer, which would go up to Main Street, so there is none on Church Street.
But this still requires a use variance, correct, Liz?
So I have to see and check to make sure.
Okay, so do we know?
It's basically just retail sale of merchandise, similar to what they're doing in the front.
Okay.
Well, how much parking do they have now? Because they did have parking.
Nine spaces. Nine spaces will pursue to a variance, and the building was converted from residential.
Have any comments made, I mean, from, from neighbors or houses buildings?
I sent the notice to the two neighbors.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
One neighbor to my neighbors, it's, it's an electrical business, it's on Block Three.
Right.
He got, that's his green card, I didn't buy that gift from Christine Watson.
I, I think in terms of maintaining one floor floors would be good.
So basically, we're down to no variances, except for possibly a use variance. It, it's just down to the whatever the use is, whether it's conforming, right? And the parking, okay, so, um, and there's nobody from the public, from the public who wants to speak to this? Okay, so, um, do you have anything else to add, Dennis, or are we, will we just adjourn this to the August fifteenth meeting? Does everybody feel comfortable with this?
Yes, yes.
No, we didn't make it yet. Could I have a motion to adjourn one thirty-three Main Street to the August fifteenth?
Motion to adjourn one thirty-three Main Street to the August fifteenth meeting.
Second?
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll be a good addition to Church Street. Yeah, it's sort of dumpy along there anyway, turning that into a nice store would be a good thing.
Yes, thank you very much. Now we're at forty-six Terry Drive. Could I have a motion to open forty-six Terry Drive?
I'll make a motion to open forty-six Terry Drive.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Walter Odin, forty-six Terry Drive.
And are you an attorney?
I am not.
Could you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you so much, and good evening. So I'm requesting a zoning variance for a corner property located at forty-six Terry Drive. It's a zoning variance of ten feet, three inches for a pool that we want to put as what is considered a front yard, but it's the rear yard of the house. We looked at every place on this property, there's only fifteen feet on this. How we can sit on the rear side of Meredith, we looked at the Terry side, which is the, really the front yard, which would not be appropriate, would not be decent for the neighborhood. So in the rear, which is surrounded by, I have one neighbor that has a flat property, so literally surrounds me on, on two sides, in the rear of that property with one foot eight, eleven foot nine by twenty foot eight punch board, to include fencing, edging, the electronic equipment, so we're giving a simple three, just like three inch variance.
So Carrie, do you have a, a big version of this? Because it's. Twenty-four, well, that's what I thought, okay. Right, the pool equipment. So what we were noticing was, the pool equipment also has to be fifteen feet from the property line, and it's not dimensioned on here, that would be, it's sort of behind the house.
Sure.
There isn't a dimension on here, so we can't really tell, but scaling it, it looks like it's not fifteen. So we would need to know what that dimension is, and if it can be fifteen, then you avoid re-noticing and having another variant on that, yes. I don't, it doesn't look like there's really any other place you can put it, unfortunately, but.
You may as well put it on there, give us the dimension, we can re-notice for each dimension.
Perfect, perfect.
So, with knowing that, I don't know how other board members feel. I mean, I think that this is probably okay. The pool, pool doesn't encroach in front of the, the, the line of the house.
I think in the past, as long as there's enough screening so that the pool can't be seen from Meredith.
Right.
It's not a problem. And also, it's quite elevated. It's probably four feet, five feet from the street up to the pool level, so you don't even need trees that are that tall to make it invisible.
It also replaces the twenty, twenty-five by twenty-five, yeah, but patio.
And while it's not, it's not the correct setback, if, for a front yard, it would be for a side yard, which in the past, anyway, that's one of the things that we try to take into account. So it's twenty-four point seven, you know, not fifteen or twelve or something, so I think that's good.
Ham, do you have any?
No, I find it adequate, and the, the, in certain areas, it's non-conforming with the street, especially on Meredith. So, you may be the necessary additions. I would just look to see in terms, to make sure that that pool is not visible.
Yeah, you won't see it, you don't see it right now, and you won't see it, but we're putting screening as evidenced by the plan all the way around, including my neighbor, Pierce, who are to the east of, in fact, one of Pierce's family is here representing tonight, so.
Great.
I, I agree, and to your point with the planting, this application needs to go before the Board of Historic Preservation, the review, and the planting is normally within their purview, and therefore you can address that in more detail with that board, so, you know, all good.
Great. Um, so I guess the only thing we really need to know is the dimension to the cool equipment, and if you can get that to be fifteen feet, then you don't need a variance for that. If it's less than that, then we would have to consider a variance for that cool equipment. It looks like you've already got, it's hard to tell on here, but it looks like you already got HVAC stuff back on that backside.
Yeah, they're propane tanks.
Or propane tanks or something, so it, it seems like a logical place for that to go.
Did you have a, a new septic tank place?
No, no, we're looking at building the new, a bigger house, going up two stories and then, then do that project. But this was looking at a larger footprint on the same dimensions that the house currently has.
I see. So the septic system is?
You have, you have something proposed.
Terry Drive side?
We're proposing that it be on Terry Drive side.
Okay.
And that's what sort of the process, we're going to only put one of the IAs.
Right, great, perfect.
All right.
Good.
Thank you so much.
And is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak? Great. We have one right right here in front of you.
A loud person.
Could you state your name and address for the record? And could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you. You can proceed.
Appreciate your consideration for this request.
Great, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if you don't, do you have anything else to add, or we're all good?
I, I think we're all good. So am I to understand that it's, uh, pool equipment is within fifteen, we have a conditional approval? Or does that save a lot of time and stuff, if we can do that? And if not, I will.
Well.
If it doesn't fit, but I'll, I'll bring it to you either way.
So what happens is we have that.
It's got to be re-noticed anyway. Yes, so it has.
Give us the dimension for the pool.
Yeah. Perfect. If it's over fifteen, if it's under fifteen, yeah, we don't have to do it.
Okay, right. Right, great, thank you. Okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn forty-six Terry Drive to the August fifteenth meeting?
Yes, motion to adjourn forty-six Terry Drive.
And a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And now we are on to decision. And our first decision is seven Cornell Road. And our first decision is seven Cornell Road.
I'm sorry, Liz, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Yes, that's better, thank you.
So this is the application of seven Cornell Road. They were hearing this on the March twenty-first of June twenty of twenty twenty-three. For the board, the purpose of the application is to construct additions to the existing single-family residence. And add a new proposed deck from the front yard. The variances were granted for post-front yard setbacks to be changed back to two feet, thirty-five feet is required. Fire, proposed front yard setback for the steps to be twenty-one feet, three point one feet, three point one or thirty-five feet required. Amount fourteen point nine feet is necessary, and finally to allow the addition to, introducing to the sky plane by four hundred thirty-three point one cubic feet. The board went through a five-part test and for the reasons set forth in the written determination hereby determined.
Okay, so what do we do since Alex isn't here? Cause I can't even really.
One, two, oh, you weren't here either?
No, no, it's just Ham and myself. So can we even?
Board member can say that they reviewed the application and they're familiar with what's being granted, they reviewed the decision, then they can vote on the.
I don't know, do either?
They're not comfortable, then we have to adjourn it to the next meeting.
Okay, I can vote on that one.
You can vote, okay. So could I have a motion to approve the decision for seven Cornell Road as written?
So move.
Tim, you have the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, thank you. Next up is forty-nine Ryson Street.
This is the application of Christopher Hill, forty-nine Ryson Street. Purpose of the application is to construct a new addition. With a proposed doorwork to the rear of the existing residence. The variances will require to allow for a proposed doorwork to be one thousand seven hundred eighty-nine cubic feet. Each pyramid intrusion, uh, where zero is permitted, and here the existing pyramid approach is one thousand five hundred seventy cubic feet. Additional supplement, four hundred fifty-two cubic feet, resulting in one thousand seven hundred eighty-nine cubic feet. That was actually the original ask, the original request, however, after getting feedback from this board, uh, the app can had to correct their. Their pyramid calculations based on spot elevations that were going to be, um, shown on a survey. The reduced release being requested became, um, an approachment of one thousand seven hundred forty-five cubic feet in total. And this board will be granting an additional two hundred forty cubic feet. For the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby grants the variances.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the variances for forty-nine Ryson Street as written?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Should I write abstain on there if I'm not voting?
Yes, we should, yeah.
Okay, next up is twelve West Henry Street.
This was an application to construct accessory structures, including a pool, cabana, pool equipment and a gym and front yard. On Columbia Street. This property is seventeen thousand square feet, it's located at twelve West Henry Street. There are two front yards on West Henry Street, Columbia Street, um, and I believe the various systems that were granted are for. Allow of a post-cabana, pool house, pool, and pool equipment and a gym located in the front yard or accessory structures are permitted. To the first two million, thirty-one feet from the front yard or thirty-five feet required. Granting a variance of four feet in total, and then also to allow the post-cabana or pool house to be thirty-one feet from the front yard. Where thirty-five feet is required, uh, granting the minimum of four feet to that. And they forward down at the application.
Great, so we have the same problem again. So Val is gonna sign because he's reviewed the case.
Okay.
So could I have a motion to approve the decision as written for twelve West Henry Street?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the last decision is sixty-three Terry Drive.
The application of sixty-three Terry Drive was to construct a proposed two thousand seven square foot footprint, two-story single-family dwelling. Sixteen by thirty-two, swale pool, pool tenant and debt, and sixty-three Terry Drive. Originally, there were several variances requested, proposed pool equipment. For the side yard or fifty-two required, proposed pool and pool equipment to remain inside yard for accessory structures that were required to be used in the rear yard. And then also the post, originally gross floor area of the house was two thousand five thousand one hundred seventy-two. Were only four thousand twenty-one to thirty-eight, and there's some of the gross floor area of variance, they are one thousand four hundred forty-one to seventy-five feet. After hearing feedback from this board, um, the app can actually eliminate two of those request variances, including the request for gross floor area. And also the request for the side yard setback, um, so ultimately. The pool is only for allow both pool and pool equipment from the side yard for the accessory structures that are required to be placed in the rear. So that's all here, requested, and the ultimate GFA of houses four thousand fourteen square feet, which makes the.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
So move.
With sixty-three Terry Drive decision as written?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now, um, do we close the public hearing and then go into the executive session? Okay, so could I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is so exciting.